Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our December the 12th, 2023 Regular Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Reeves.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Yao.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Kalanga.
Here.
Councilmember Ramikas.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Short.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor is absent.
Any changes to the agenda? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Yao.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
All right. All right. Consent agenda. Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. On the consent agenda this evening is reclassification of Police Officer One to Lieutenant Position, acceptance of grant funds from Virginia State Police Heat Program, connection of reserve wells X-4B, X-2A, and D-3 to the water distribution system, acceptance of grant funds from Virginia Tourism Corporation, treasures reports, and minutes of previous meetings.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Moving right along. Recognition of Councilmember Eric Kalinga's service to the town. I will now present a service reward to the outgoing Councilmember Eric Kalinga for his term and office of December the 2nd, 2021, to December the 31st, 2023. This service reward is presented to Eric Kalinga, Councilmember. In recognition of your personal commitment, dedication, and successful service to the town, December the 2nd, 2021, to December the 31st, 2023. With our sincere appreciation and best wishes for you. Continue successfully in all your future endeavors. All right. Let's see. All right. Public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for town citizens, visitors, and groups to speak or bring to our attention any town government-related issue. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Groups are requested to have a spokesperson. If you are here for a public hand, please hold your comments until later. Is there anyone who would like to speak at, speak this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Eric, congratulations. Well deserved. I know you're looking forward to get some extra spare time, but I'm sure the citizens of Culpeper, especially in the town, appreciate your service. So just want to thank you and congratulations to the rest of you guys who got elected in November. Congratulations. The reason I'm here tonight is I want to say thank you personally to each of you guys for allowing the Reese Across America Virginia 1029 to present the Christmas parade here in Culpeper in 2023. You know, over the past couple of years, some of you may, some of you may not, that I've been a part of that on the other side as well, as far as different entities supporting that parade, but I don't think anybody's ever come and really said thank you to you guys for allowing, for allowing that to happen in Culpeper. Some people I wanted to thank on behalf of the committee, not just myself personally, but on behalf of our committee is your Town Manager, Chris Hively, and his staff, Ms. Clatterbuck. We've had numerous conversations at the very, very last minute to make sure that we pull off a festive event. But I want, the most important, I want you guys to know the goal of the Christmas parade was not only just to have a Christmas parade for the community, but was to support our veterans who are laid to rest at the Culpeper National Cemetery. So our goal, you know, when we first, when you guys first gave us the go to present the Christmas parade, our committee set a goal to have 5,000 Rees laid this weekend at the cemetery. We came up short. In 45 days, we were able to attain over 2,400 Rees with response through our community. Now, I can tell you, I was a little nervous as far as asking for monies and sponsorships for Rees to be able to participate in the Christmas parade, but I wanted you guys to know from me that our community didn't balk at that at all. So we had all different types of representations in the parade, different religious groups, different businesses were able to showcase their businesses as well, had tons of sponsorships and donations to support the cemetery. But again, you know, without you guys, without Chris Hively and his staff, we wouldn't be able to move forward to make it happen. I think there was over 8,000 people there on the streets. I didn't get to see it. I usually don't get to see it. I'm on the back end, which brings me to my next point. I don't know if there's any S or money left, or if there's any money left in the kitty somewhere for the end of the year, but your police department and your Public Works and any other people involved with the town, they deserve a little thank you from you guys and from the community as well, because I can tell you, it takes, over the past four or five years, it takes both the Sheriff's Office and the Town PD to put together this parade, to make sure it's a safe parade, especially at night. This year, I think we did it just with the Town Police Department and Public Works. Those guys are phenomenal. That parade's not going to happen without Chris Settle and his staff. I mean, I can name them down from Mike Grant to Terrell, to Ashley Banks, to the, to just any of those officers who will work at intersections. The parade does not happen without Chris Settle and his staff and Public Works and Chris Hively and his staff. And Jim Hoy, I'm sure I'm missing somebody. But again, thank you for allowing us to do that. We look forward to doing it next year. But again, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. 9.01. Public hand on rezoning of parcel.
Mr. Mayor, I think we still have some speakers.
Oh, excuse me. I don't know what I, Lord, moving too fast.
That's all right. Mayor Reeves and Town Council members, my name is Andrew Carter. I'm a resident at 1099 Oaklawn Drive here in town. I'm reading this letter on behalf of all my neighbors on Oaklawn Drive, and I'd like to take a minute just to have the members of Oaklawn Drive stand up, just to show who's here. All right. Thank you, guys. And all of you also received all these letters in your, in your email. So I'm just going to read a quick letter real fast. For decades, the Oaklawn neighborhood has been a highly-desired, sought-after neighborhood that boasts many of the components of nature and private living with a feeling of being out in the country with a short distance from town. It came to the attention of citizens of Oaklawn neighborhood that a proposed Madison Trail Connector will be adjacent to the residence of, on Oaklawn Drive. The decisions about the plan and acquisitions of the property and easements were made without our knowledge or input. Consequently, consequently, we arranged a meeting with the town on December 5th, 2023, to discuss the proposal. We are advised that the Madison Trail Connector will span a distance of 900 feet of golf course frontage property along the holes of five and six at the Country Club and a large parcel of wooded land directly behind our community. The current plan includes construction of a eight-to-nine-foot-tall dome cage to prevent pedestrians, bikers, and pets from being struck by golf balls. Oaklawn residents believe that the building of such an obstructive structure will create an environmental dam, impeding the free passage of wildlife that travel daily in our neighborhood. Another concern is trapping people within its confines during health emergencies or criminal activities. Our hope is that an alternative solutions to the problems involving the pedestrians, golfers, and wildlife utilizing the same space can be designed and agreed upon. Additionally, we have many questions about the policing, infrastructure, security measures, and maintenance that will surely accompany the proposed Madison Trail Connector. For example, the trail will provide access to a secluded area of wooded, unsupervised land and trails, but be inaccessible to EMT, fire, or police vehicles. The dead-end trail will encourage use of our private property for travel from, to the north and south sides of Madison Road. As there are no plans for patrols or technology to proactively manage these issues, the town will depend on the citizens to report any criminal. During the meeting, we learned there is no planned timeline for a final connection of this trail to Rockwater Park. Although the purchase of the land and the easement can certainly proceed now, perhaps the construction of a trail could wait until the goal to connect to Yao Meadow slash Spring Street and Rockwater can be realized and more thought could be given to the issues such as those mentioned above. We, as the directed impacted citizens, would like the opportunity to be involved in the planning, design, and implementation of this trail moving through our community. We hope you consider this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak at this time?
Rusty Robertson, 1067 Oaklawn Drive. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I just wanted to add to what Andrew had just said to you guys, that our concerns reach further than just our community. Our concerns extend to all the citizens of the town of Culpeper that there was no community involvement in the plans or in the decision to purchase the property that is currently under contract, the 19 acres behind the Country Club of Culpeper. We would request that we would be included in any further planning that would affect the serenity and beauty of our community, and that you would, and we further request that the town would include other communities that may be affected by future plans of the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie Tupizza. I'm at 11:07, Oaklawn Drive. I look at the fifth, the fifth tee out of my back window 10 hours a day, and I'm representing the property owner Sonny Reynolds, who owns that property and other properties that's connected to this opportunity here. I'd like to thank the town for the effort that they've made to find money to acquire this property and to put it into, and keep it in its natural state. I think that's a really great thing to do. I want, I want to make sure that we're not rushing into anything. There is no rush to do this trail, and that I recommend that, that the dream is complete, when the dream is complete, that the connection to the park itself, which seems to be the dream of the economic development in the town, when that's, when that's ready to do that, then we, we consider the trail. In between now and the time that that happens, we have time to engage with the Park and Recs Department to, the safety issues, the issues of the view that I have out of my backyard right now will be blocked by a fence like that that would be ugly and unnecessary. I, I'm a disc golfer, and I do a lot of things on the disc golf course myself to take care of safety issues that the town isn't taking care of, and I don't mind. That's what we do at Spillman Park as well, a bunch of us do. And I recommend that, or I would like to recognize that there's 18 holes over there, and 16 of them are, are with traffic. So when we're up on a tee, we yield to people on, on the course. And I would expect that, I expect that golfers, I'm not a golfer, but I expect that they're, they're courteous people, it seems like they are, that on the, on the fifth tee, on the short distance between the fifth tee and the fairway, that they could in turn yield. That's an option that we can discuss between now and the time that, that this trail gets finished. And so I'm just asking for enough time for the community to be involved, so there's no one, I don't, I don't believe there's anybody here from the golf course tonight, that we should be getting together and, and resolve these things, so you don't have angry citizens here. There's, there's, there's solutions to these problems, but let's not rush into this. Get the property, get it safe, protect the, the nature. That's an awesome thing to do. I really appreciate the effort that the town has done to do that, but let's, let's wait until the, the dream can be completed, so we have plenty of time to, to consider these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Public forum is closed at this time. All right. Can you get it off? Just unplug it if you want. All right. 9.01. A public hand on rezoning of parcel to Central Commercial District C-2, Lewis.
Good evening. I am Louis Pankati, Town Planner, and I'll be presenting the staff report for rezoning case number 4339, 2003, or 2023, excuse me. This is a request to rezon parcel 41A14Q7 from C-1 Neighborhood Commercial to C-2 Central Commercial. The owner is Maiden Asher LLC, and the reasoning behind the rezoning request is to allow the use of a commercial school within the existing building. The property is located at the corner of South Main Street and West Asher, Asher Street. It has vehicle entrances off West Asher and a parking lot behind the building. Unreality LLC is moving into the spaces that were previously occupied by Ed's Award and Engraving. The owner of the business describes the operation as a state-of-the-art smokeless range and technology lounge, providing customizable, professional development, education, entertainment via virtual reality and augmented reality. The facility can offer training certificates to first responders and law enforcement officers as well to the public for skills such as firearm safety. The facility will also offer entertainment-focused platform for customers. It is estimated that the facility will serve roughly 12 students with two employees at one time. No exterior changes to the building or to the site are proposed. All currently approved uses within the building are permitted both in C-1 and C-2 zoning districts. It was determined by the zoning administrator that this use best aligns with the ordinance's definition of a commercial school. The zoning ordinance defines a commercial school as businesses that are available to the public for a fee whose primary operation is to instruct clients in a particular skill or activity. Representative examples include dance studios, music studios, aerobic and/or fitness classes, craft and/or art studios, and other similar schools of instruction. Since this is not a use permitted in the C-1 zoning district, a rezoning to C-2 is necessary. The property is located within the central business and town center character area, the downtown urban development growth area, and the business investment area as designated in the comprehensive plan. Both these C-1 and C-2 zoning districts are recommended zoning districts in the mixed-use slash commercial future land use in the comprehensive plan. The proposal would also promote the use of the existing structure, present employment opportunities, and provide diversity in businesses, which are all goals in those districts within the comp plan. The Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding the rezoning on November 21st, 2023. The commission voted to, voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is also here if you have any questions for them.
No questions. Sounds like a great asset to the community, though.
Open the floor for public hand at this time. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Would anyone like to speak?
My name is Sean Fuller. I live at 845 Foxden Road here in the town. Mayor, council members, I appreciate you allowing me to speak. I'd just like to speak about three things real quick and break them down for you. The first is our local law enforcement community that we have here, town and county. This facility will allow them to train in an, in an environment where you utilize virtual reality. Now, in order to do that, I don't know that the town really has that opportunity here, but a lot of times in agencies north of here, we have that type of augmented reality, and you can train there. But in order for our agencies, they have to take travel, they have to pay for that from another agency when you've got that right here in our town. So it would be a great opportunity for them to, to train in high-stressed environments, all in the safety of a room where there's no ammunition. I think it would be great for our, our town police and our county as well. The next thing I'd like to bring up is our citizenry. We have folks in our county and town that own firearms, whether it's collecting, personal safety, or hunting. This gives an opportunity for people to come in and get training, safe training in an environment where if you wanted to do high-stressful environment, you can do that. But moreover, just firearm safety. We have children that are hunting as well. This gives them an opportunity to learn how to operate firearms in a safe manner. The other thing is the fact that, man, it brings a great technology to the county that, that, and the town that hasn't been here. One other thing that I, that I like is the STEM activity and the engineering activity and the education that happens there as well. I think it's a great opportunity to bring even more STEM activities to the town and county. So I would encourage you to approve it, and I really appreciate you letting me speak. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Public hand? Anyone else? Close the public hand at this time? All right. 9.1A1RR ref, approval of rezoning of 604-612 South Main Street to Central Commercial, C-2 Lewis.
Yes. So the recommendation is that council follow the Planning Commission's recommendation of approving the rezoning of parcel 41A14Q7 from C-1 Neighborhood Commercial to C-2 Central Commercial.
Any questions?
I move the recommendation.
Second.
In the discussion? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kalanga.
Aye.
Mayor Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramikas.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Short.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao.
Aye.
Motion carries.
9.01B. Public hand on zoning ordinance text amendment to zoning ordinance sections 27-352. Jared.
Thank you, sir. My name is Jared Cruz. I work in the Town Planning Department. So I'll try to keep it brief and just give you an overview of the draft zoning ordinance amendment. So just as some background, as it stands today, the zoning ordinance doesn't include a provision that would set a minimum amount of time that has to pass before a previously denied request for a certificate of finding can return to our Architectural Review Board for consideration. Similar provisions are in place for public hearing items such as rezonings and conditional use permits, but there's nothing currently preventing an applicant from repeatedly bringing the same request to the ARB after it's been denied, which has occurred several times over the last few years. Along with these repeat hearings before the ARB, this also creates a system where the applicants are able to continue to use the appeal process to bring these requests back to Town Council. Additionally, the ordinance currently provides that approved certificates of finding are valid for five years before expiring if the work has not yet begun. So this five-year period's longer than what's typical for most similar board approvals in other localities across the state. Our current ordinance also lacks a mechanism that speaks to the expiration of projects that, where the work is begun, but then abandoned for an extended period of time. Based on these concerns, the ARB made a request to Town Council in September to consider amending the zoning ordinance to accomplish two things. One would be to define a period of time that must pass before a denied request can return to the ARB for consideration unless that application has been substantively changed, and two, reduce the period of time before an approved certificate of finding expires, along with setting an expiration date for work that is abandoned. So the request was presented to the 3P Committee in September, and staff was directed to begin the zoning amendment process. Staff drafted language that included a new section stipulating that denied request cannot come back to the ARB for approval within one year of being denied unless substantive changes are made to the application. It also breaks out what constitutes a substantive change, which would be an alteration in design, arrangement, mass, material, or location. That draft language also amends the existing section on expirations to state that certificates will expire two years from the date of issuance if work on the approved project has not been commenced within that period, or if the project is begun and then abandoned for a period of two years. I would note that the draft ordinance does include the ability to request a one-time extension to these expirations with reasonable cause. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on the proposed amendment on November 21st. They recommended approval of the code change with two changes. The first was to set a shorter six-month expiration window that would apply when, when a certificate of finding was issued in response to an existing zoning violation. So this would be, you know, similar to the cases we've seen where someone's removed an architectural feature without the approval, and subsequently had to go back to the board to rebuild that feature. This would set a smaller window to begin that work. And the second change was to reduce the amount of time of, before expiration from two years to six months for work that is begun and then abandoned. So those changes were captured in the draft language that was included in your agenda packet. With that, I thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have from me.
I'm sorry. Was the change made by Planning Commission addressed by the ARB at their special meeting on December 6th or 5th?
They, they've not seen those most recent changes.
Move the recommendation.
In the discussion?
Yes, I'd like to have a discussion. So I think, we don't have anybody here from ARB right now to talk about that timeframe. In the meetings that I'd been to, they had initially talked about having that window of two years. Right now, it is five years, correct? It's a five. And so the, certain specialty, so like, we have a couple slate roofs in town. If those were to be replaced, it could be hard to get that done, or at least start that process within six months. With our older buildings, we have some specialty windows. We have certain things that, you know, coming from the construction world, that six-month window is kind of hard sometimes to even start that process. So that's the one thing that kind of worries me about that recommendation from Planning Commission. Now, could it be a year? I think a year is very reasonable, but that six-month timeframe, I think it would be a strain on homeowners and kind of, it would be overbearing.
Mr. Mayor? I just got a question. That, did that actually come from the Planning Commission, or is that just part of the process? I thought that would have been a staff recommendation to the Planning Commission, and then they finally bless it.
So it, it was brought in by staff as a discussion item that was then incorporated into the recommendations.
I, I, I see the point of Councilman Brown. I don't see why we, I guess what you're getting at is maybe postpone this approval until we hear from the ARB, or is that, is that the thought?
I think that would be reasonable.
If I could, I, I do, one quick point of clarification. So the six-month window is intended to only apply when it's a redress to a violation as opposed to, so if you came in with a new request to replace a roof, for instance, and it was approved, that you would have the two-year window.
Okay.
The, the other just point I would make is I, I think we, this would still be subject to a public hearing tonight if there were any public comments. I just want to make sure we hadn't moved beyond that point.
My apologies. I withdraw the motion.
Any more discussion?
Public hearing.
Open the floor for public hand at this time. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone like to speak this time? No one? Close the public hand. 9.01B1RR reference ordinance amended section 27-352 related to the ARB first reading. Jared.
Yes, sir. So with, staff would recommend the council adopts ordinance number 2023010 as recommended by the Planning Commission, amending chapter 27 zoning. recommended by the Planning Commission, amending chapter 27 zoning section 27-352 of the town code and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute that document. It's further recommended that council consider waiving the second reading of the ordinance and pass the order that the second reading be waived. I'm sorry, repeat myself, and pass the ordinance on first reading. Again, I'm happy to answer any staff questions.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam?
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kalanga.
Aye.
Mayor Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Amikis.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Short.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Motion carries.
9.03A1RR, reference, ordinance amended chapter 3 relating to enforcement, first reading, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. This ordinance amending chapter 3 animals, adding section 3.2 related to enforcement of the town code. This is first reading. In June of this year, the town adopted more stringent regulations related to the keeping of fowl on property within the town. Unfortunately, chapter 3 does not identify the local government employee with the authority to enforce the code, and without that identification per state code, we would not be able to enforce this regulation as written. Therefore, the proposed language would allow an animal control officer, law enforcement officer, or code enforcement officer to issue summonses related to violations of the town animal ordinance. There's no anticipated financial impact associated with this change, and the recommendation is that council hold the first reading of ordinance number 02023009, amending chapter 3 animals of the town code by adding section 3-12 related to enforcement and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the document. It's further recommended that council order that the second reading be waived and pass this ordinance on first reading without the necessary of waiting until the next regular meeting of the Town Council to act pursuant with council's power to otherwise order under Town Code 2-32. Be happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Kalanga.
Aye.
Mayor Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Amikis.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Short.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Motion carries.
9.03A2RR, reference, ordinance amended chapter 2 relating to order of business, first reading. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. The item before you was discussed at the November Personnel and Ordinance Committee, and there was consensus to add clarifying language to Town Code section 2-77 and chapter 2 relating to order of business. The proposed new language reads as follows. The Town Council shall establish its order of business by written agenda. The mayor, town manager, and town clerk shall prepare the written agenda for regular council meetings for presentation to council as directed through the council committee meeting process. Items not directed through the council committee meeting process shall be requested to be added as a modification to the agenda at the regular council meeting. The items listed on the agenda may be waived or modified by a two-thirds vote of the council members present. Tonight, it is recommended that council holds first reading of ordinance number 0-2023-011, amending section 2-77 of Division 3 and chapter 2 of the town code relating to order of business and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the document. It is further recommended that council order that the second reading be waived and pass this ordinance tonight on the first reading. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any question?
I move the recommendation.
Second.
Any discussions? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Amikis.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Short.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kalanga.
Aye.
Motion carries.
9.03B1RR, reference, approval of James Madison Highway Lighting Project, Jim.
Good evening. Before you have a report and recommendation for approval of additional street lighting on James Madison Highway. I think many of you are aware, we've had increased pedestrian activity in James Madison Highway between the shopping center at Culpeper Town Center and just to the north there towards the intersection with Bell Avenue and Old Brandy Road. Limited street lighting in this area has become a concern. We've had multiple pedestrian incidents along that corridor. Staff has evaluated various options for improving the safety in this area and recommending the addition, additional installation of street lighting in the median of James Madison Highway. The estimated cost of this work is approximately $330,000 if we had a contractor to execute the project, but we estimate that we can procure the materials and perform this work, scope of work with staff at an estimated amount of $150,000. Staff recommends completing this work as soon as possible. The financial impact, good news monies are available from the street and highway maintenance. Revenue received from VDOT in excess of the prior approved fiscal year '24. State streets and highway maintenance revenue amount necessary to cover the cost of this project. Recommendation is council authorize the town manager to execute contracts not to exceed $150,000 to install the additional street lighting on this corridor. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any question?
I move the recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Amikis.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Short.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kalanga.
Aye.
Mayor Reeves.
Aye.
Motion carries.
1001, 10-01, monthly report. Any questions or comments? No one? Wish everyone a happy New Year, Merry Christmas, and be safe. Good night. Meeting adjourned.